I got it warm for you, Hannah. I got it warm for you.
Six o'clock, we'll go ahead and start. The May meeting, May twenty twenty two meeting. First thing must take a moment of silence. Thank you.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Right in your microphone.
For your pacemaker.
Yeah. Roll call, please.
Robert Jones.
I'm here.
Marissa Skag.
Here.
Shane Davis.
Here.
Steve Danny.
Here.
Chip Baugh.
Here.
All President Council.
Approval of minutes from the prior meeting. April meeting. Any questions or comments?
Make a motion to approve the minutes from prior meetings.
Well, second that. A motion in a second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same. Minutes approved. Clerk Treasuries report.
Good evening. The, as y'all see, the general fund is really good shape, nine hundred fifty one thousand two hundred twenty six dollars. I'd like to ask the board to look at their Google Drive and look at the bills that we paid last month. We spent almost two million dollars paying bills and take a look at it and see if there's anything on there you think we could probably cut back or switch around or do something different, try to lower the bills just like at home. That's all I have.
I'm sure we're probably just like at home, we're starting to feel the effects of inflation.
Yes.
Fuel costs particular.
Texas Fire Department, fuel, police department, fuel. Let me heat that budget up pretty quick. We just need to watch it. Any questions on the clerk treasures report?
If I can ask what you may not have here on the rainy day, rainy day fund, we don't know what kind of shape rainy day fund is.
We just, we just talked about this week.
Eighty, eighty three thousand.
Okay, I'm talking off the top of my head.
It's that kind of money.
Yeah.
Yeah, gotcha. I'd move to approve the claims.
I'll second.
Okay, I've got a motion in a second to prove the claim. Clerk Treasuries report, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same. Thank you. A lot of here from the fire department.
I think. I'm online, council, how are you guys?
Are you out of town as yet?
No, I'm in town, I just, I just rolled in from the track. Uh, yeah, it starts, it starts a busy month of May for me, so uh total runs for the month of April was a hundred thirty five, obviously was a few runs shy of, of last year, as you can see, uh, as it's broken down into there of how many runs per each jurisdiction that we respond to, we was in Anderson, uh, four times, uh, lapel twice, Markville twice, uh, and then the town of Eagles nineteen, obviously we do the contract from there and then sixty seven EMS responses and forty, uh, basic lives responses and a twenty disregards, so it makes up a total, we had a busy month, uh, pretty serious runs, we had an incident of the reformatory uh, and involving some, uh, serious injuries out there, I had a, um, a big debriefing today, uh, with the reformatory staff, um, and some other things are going to be changing to uh, allow better communication amongst us and the three facilities that we service, uh, the juvenile center, the CIC and the, and the Indiana reformatory and stuff, so a lot of good came out of the discussion that we had from the incident that we, uh, responded on out there. Um, could have been a, uh, it was a huge incident, a couple people were seriously injured, but, uh, could have been a lot worse than what it was, so very thankful for that and, uh, the, um, the support that we're getting from the, uh, the reformatory and the state, um, to allow us to have this type of communication um, is like, you know, I can't thank them enough because they understand the need and, and so do we, so uh, more to follow on that, um, if you seen around town, uh, during the baseball parade, uh, we took delivery of a, uh, new golf cart. Uh, the golf cart, uh, was kind of another tool or toolbox for us, um, just by talking to Gary Jocelyn at Truck Pro, um, kind of, you know, discussing some of the things that I would like to see happen and then all of a sudden this golf cart shows up on our front door and says, here, use it and, um, so we can get into the trails if, if, uh, somebody sets a fire back into the trails or, uh, during the June Jamboree, you know, small traffic and fire or something, we can navigate through the crowd and stuff, so another tool or toolbox that you see, um, that's there and, um, you know, Gary and his staff at Truck Pro, uh, have, um, done a remarkable job on this, I know he's, um, already working on his second cart um, to be, uh, sent out to a department and so I think it's going to be a good thing for him and, uh, as well it is for this department, so other than that, um, that's all that I have as far as my report goes, I know, um, or you may not know, but, uh, May first was my official day back to work, so I didn't shave and lose the beard, so, um, I'm, I'm back on the fire department making runs, um, and responding accordingly and stuff, so, uh, I'm glad to be back and, uh, I don't want to go through that again.
Thanks, chief. Any questions for the chief? Captain Trailer.
All right, uh, for April, we're, also, we started full time. He's been signed night shift, officer differences. We were actually arrest a suspect that's wanted for a police department on a murder warrant, shot, shot. Actually shot the victim on the night, so the drugs are found. Our act of stop on. Uh, Chief R and I were eventuated active threat command training. Basically did. Plan and understand it now, all the agencies will. I was able to attend the Indian traffic safety conference, has a fifth writing certificate certified over two years.
I have one question for you. Not regarding the report or anything. Where are we at or where's the discussion out on the flop cameras?
Uh, I had sent in some paperwork.
Okay. I'll give it, I'll give it Scott.
Who's following it?
So I'm, I did the report. I need to update. Yeah, it's, I can go print some.
No, that's fine.
I didn't want to catch anybody off guard, I'm just, I think it's a great, I think it's something.
I, I've got all the numbers for him, uh, just waiting.
Okay, great.
I did have a comment, so, uh, the officers, individual officers, a penalty, very small apartment compared to somebody else's apartment, on an individual basis, they just. But I was saying. That one example that he gave, it just consistently just. The guys appreciate that. It's great that people have believed that there's. There is, uh, for potential residents as a whole, a pretty dark bit, but there's a lot of capacity. Yeah, it wasn't our case.
How'd you do? Did you add it? I got to do it. The car, is that what you was looking for from Indianapolis? Really?
So, yeah, that's kind of one of the things, it's, we can stop vehicles for several reasons, some of them people that he was very, very minor, the wire placement. Stuff like that. No license plate or.
There was a wreck at Saturday at Hilton Avenue and Main Street where somebody went to make the curb, hit another car head on. Lady that was involved in that, uh, said her officer was extremely helpful and polite and kind and she'd like to know if she could call up her, get his name so she could thank you. Okay, I appreciate it.
Thank you.
That's good.
You see the figures I got for you, and there's a quotation on there, and I'm not exactly sure. Kind of explain it because we've always been, what the court did kind of involve just beyond ending our judgment to find something like this. You should have received a, not your, your report from us, the fact that the this report bottom line is judicial system could put a hard push on mental illness and problems. They're actually going to have a seven hour go for less. This is all year. And the first question, most people say this law. Figures are showing here, because, in fact, the state of Indiana, Frank's fifty first, fifty fourth, forty eighth, forty ninth, forty seventh, relative to the number of people who are capping up in need of care for depression, suicide, trauma, psychosis. That's not really figures I like to hear. Now, why does it affect us? Because in that case, it affects actually individuals in your family, people who surround them. The worst possible case is we have a person that is mentally has been a problem, takes the violence. That's it, we don't lose it or lose any office whatsoever with other people. So again, I'm asking you, because I'm going to hand this out to you.
You can take it home, trash it, whatever you want to do. But one of the easiest and simple things I've seen so far that tells you two signs, visual signs that actually take one seat, if you see that. Be afraid, sit there and say, hey, you know, what do you know about it? Now, with that being said, most of the. On the back. First thing I've read, you know, this teenager had primary, a lot of these things. Nobody wanted to disturb, no one wanted to ask. It was a simple thing that they said, there was someone set up, said, now, say, hey, are you planning to commit suicide? That diffuses so much, opens doors and windows. Now, the recent story struck me was the guy that it was not shit. And it was his best buddy. He said, so I've been through hard times, but man, you know, everybody gets hard times, if you ever ask him. Your public suicide? Hell, no. So, yeah, it may not be something you may touch directly, your kids may be coming home with stories, you're sitting there shaking your head about. What does that have to do with order violations? Nothing. Bottom line is that though, it's part of the tilt. And again, I think there's something like that to reach, to push, make people aware.
Any question, comments for the judge? Uh, Park, by one. Hannah.
Um, say that the building summit somewhere in front of you, if you've got any questions, just let me know on that.
Wait, wait a minute. I'm not sure we got that.
Yeah.
It's in the drive.
On the drive.
Oh, okay.
Use the drive, so. That's okay, that's okay. I, I usually. Okay, all right.
Usually, usually it's up there.
So guys like doing that.
Our Sangria program, uh, you think you've seen some work over on the J D Chambers building, they're replacing and repairing mortar and tuck pointing, they're doing a really good job. I assumed when warmer weather came, we'd see a lot going on and case in point, um, so they are getting new windows as well. Um, next in building violations and enforcement, we did condemn one unsafe building, we are working with the owner on safety remediations and the Board of Examen Appeals is the authority on that one, uh, whether or not, uh, it can be re-entered and reopened. Our U D O, we're continuing to find ten, believe it or not, over the year, since we passed it in October, which is coming up. Which I expected about a year of tweaking, you know, it wasn't a perfect document, it's never going to be a perfect document, but just kind of getting it to best suit us. Our biggest thing we're viewing on that is the commercial solar and accessory solar uses.
Is that what's on the.
It's in the amendments for the U D O.
Oh, oh, yeah, there, there is one thing that we altered, but nothing major, yeah.
Okay.
Um, so on the twenty third, uh, planning commission is coming together for an educational workshop, uh, that we're going to have, so we can all just kind of get on the same page about what solar is, what stuff, what the, um, ordinances and laws around us are doing and what we can maybe do. Uncigar Farm, we're still waiting on cold spring section two. Last I heard, they just had an easement that they had to redraw on their flat and get that over to me, um, for approval. Don't really know what the holdup is, it's been quite a few weeks, um, but that's really all they need to get going. So we'll, we'll see what happens next with that. Uh, today we had a meeting with the representative from the Falls about the road conditions, uh, there, so they agreed to patch the major issues right now and by the end of the summer, when they're completely done with construction, um, they will repair the road and we'll get a maintenance bond.
Do, do they have to pick that up to, I mean, not to repair it, but.
Yeah, they're going to have to.
That's terrible.
Yeah, they're going to have, they're going to have to do that, they recognize that.
Okay.
They also look for yours to, they can do some immediate stuff.
Yeah.
Today, get some gravel on some of those chuckles, the, the plan is as soon as all the construction is done, as far as all the equipment company, like cement trucks, that sort of thing, then they're going to rework it. Okay. Now, there's a little bit of friction between us, they want to do it, we argue they need to do everything. There are, you just, they just need to do spots that are failing, then we came back and said, done four samples and the places that have not failed yet have issues already. And so, uh, the maintenance bond, I think is a good place to be. Um, however, as they do the repairs, once the construction is done, you know, then, then we'll know exactly where we sit.
What if?
How much of that needs to be repaired?
What if the construction isn't done by the end of summer?
They anticipate being done, talk about that too, they anticipate being done July, June, July.
Okay.
And then we talked about how that's a big cushion. What I, what we said is you've got to seal that, uh, put the final code on it, so as a cost to plan it before the first freeze, because that's what they did wrong. They never sealed, they did the sub base, the base, never sealed it. They, uh, water penetrated into the sub base, which is very porous, and the free sauce cycle is ruined. It, it was a poor pavement design in the first place.
If it happened to take longer, just because of circumstances right now, we'll just have them continue to fill the patches. We did kind of have that as an agreement that, you know, if one chuckle gets a little, a little more beat up than another one, then they'll just have to go back and refill it.
That's good.
In the meantime.
And this is, this was the boss, he came in all night, so.
I'm confident something will happen, if not today, next. That's all I've got.
They did a really good job, Brad.
Can we ask him to, uh, sweep the streets out there? Carrot Glen either has a sweeper of their own or they hire someone, but, uh, that area is filled, and I feel sorry for the people who already live out there.
Yeah.
Carrot Glen is very good.
Yeah, for her.
They are, they're very good about keeping the road under the bud, the runners, the concrete.
So they're supposed to do that based on soil conservation and swift, which is, uh, some water.
I just think we need to look at it, I agree with you. I've got a question that I don't know the answer to, but if you build a new home and it's approved, you got a building permit, can you build a fence off of that permit?
No, it's a separate permit.
No, no, I'll talk to you right after this.
Yeah, it's got a different price.
Yeah. All right, thank you. Scott.
Okay, a couple things on the report, this isn't written down yet, but, uh, that's because it came later this afternoon. Uh, the developer, it might not seem like it, but if you do go walk Franklin Street, they've done a lot of work since the winter has been over in the warmer weathers coming in, bringing in the topsoil, which is very important to the residents, they cleared out a lot of the debris, construction debris, concrete slack, stones that were just dumped, uh, and that right away works to create space. Uh, they have to do stripings, that's going to happen, they have prepared a lot of the asphalt, um, problems, remember? We just want them to hurry up and pave it and get it sealed like we just talked about with the falls before the free saw like the cycle got really, uh, intense, then they did that, but there's, back in, there's a price to pay. They need to come back and raise the mantles and valves. Uh, it's got probably a lot of complaints about that, I know I, I have, and they'll go in and they'll saw cut the asphalt and then go and, just like on, um, Water Street, they'll frame it in concrete and get it double. It doesn't look as pretty because it's not all black, but structurally it's the better way to go. So, and then Saturday, and that's going to be tomorrow, Saturday, they're going to be doing a lot of that, that work on, um, State Street, so you're going to see a flagman now. I'm glad they're doing it on Saturday. Um, we've had a very productive month, on very routine, routine matters, uh, not a lot of little, um, I guess you can have a couple of your stories. Uh, we had a few, few of those, but, uh, mostly the, everybody's been just very productive lately. Uh, community crossing grant came in and we had representation for that with the governor, uh, we didn't get the full grant, but we got, we, we received seven hundred and one thousand, well, seven hundred and two thousand, plus our twenty five percent match, so we'll do nine hundred and thirty five thousand dollars for the saving, which is a reduction what we planned, but we'll take that. Community crossings all, all very long. Um, R D C is, uh, beginning a process to look at partials for additional tip. And then, uh, if some of you may or may not know that we're, the, uh, utility receipt tax has been eliminated, so, uh, one point four percent decrease, now we take it off everybody's bill. Um, we're yet to get the fine details of how that'll look, um, but we do have to put in the billing, um, two notices that, uh, that tax rate's been reduced and then today you're going to talk about it. One of the ordinances you have to pass.
There's, there's two, Scott.
Two.
Any questions for Scott?
Thanks, Scott.
Okay, I've got one question. Maybe for Hannah. Roundabouts, I've had conversations with people that would like to landscape and take care of it and put, put their little sign up.
Yes.
Uh, this is done in Anderson, it's done in Mudseed, it's done all over the place. Uh, Hannah, I would like to see businesses or something adopt these roundabouts out here.
Yeah.
Same as like over here, I don't know if we have to get state approval, state permission, well, I would.
Yeah. Do you know if the ones in Anderson are in dot roundabouts or if they're local?
They're local.
That's why.
Yeah.
So in dot is very, very, very strict on what can and can't go in a roundabout because they have safety measures for visibility. Um, so I've actually contacted a dot, uh, and I've had two people call me back, uh, and they're looking into it. Um, I'm going to have to bug them again though, but they are aware of what we're asking for as well as, I know we had talked to a lot of them by the high school. So, if they get back to me and say, you know, yes, you can put something that's, you know, two feet, no taller.
Yeah.
Shrubs, something like that, but like, yeah, they're, they don't even like shrubbery.
Yeah.
You know, so it's, it's pretty much just.
Yeah, one in Anderson, a couple of them, I've seen that they're likely to be a foot high, the plants are not very big at all.
Yeah.
But they look nice.
Yeah, no, I know, they look nice, but it would be, it would be their decision, they would have to see. Should they allow any landscaping, you have to go through probably like a, a site planning review with them, I'm not sure how long.
You possibly could look at an American flag of both in town, both roundabouts, and we entertain that or?
Uh, they probably wouldn't allow something that tall, like, like a normal size.
Yeah, we're talking about pole with the flag and the.
You mean a semi target?
Yeah, I, that probably wouldn't fly.
Yeah, you had a thirty foot tall pole, it wouldn't interfere with anything.
Wouldn't be a.
You'd be surprised, but.
It went this month, it would have been wiped out.
It would have wiped out.
Yeah, it went right through, they kept going straighter, they did the roundabout, they did that through about.
Yeah. So it's kind, it's kind of odd to me that they're so restrictive on stuff, when it seems like if you put a lot of things there, it makes people less inclined to pull something like that. But that's, I'm not a traffic engineer, so what do I do?
You know, just kind of piggyback off that. Right over here on the corner, I don't know, got knocked down, but, uh, street light was not clear off.
Yeah.
It's down at, uh, someplace south here on State Street.
Well, there's a, a lamppost and a stop sign, those are private.
So, just like.
We had a whole ticket out. It's been about a sign, uh, or lamppost.
Just along the traffic.
Yeah, and like this, this is other example of how out of control, semi, he did that, he hit that in front of witnesses, still felt like he could get away with it. It was a hit skip, he left half, another good severe damage. Still kept rolling. I want, in my corner, they've been totally knocked down.
Any other comments or questions? Thanks, Scott. Uh, I have no old business, so we'll go straight to new business, first one is interlocal agreement. First one is interlocal agreement. Town of Bengals and the town of Pendleton.
Yes, sir, this is just interlocal by which our, our team can get that fire inspection over at the town of Bengals because of the fire department in Eagles. Absorbed slash combined with ours and we're looking forward to the fire territory in twenty twenty-three. As you can see, the town council will be certain past this, but this just makes it all legal like if our council would adopt the same.
Got a question on.
Yes.
Is, do we have, and will it work in Ingles? A schedule that says you, you've got this violation? And does our chief, does the town receive money for the fire inspections?
That I don't know.
We, we need to look at that, especially on if someone, if the chief writes a violation and they just ignore him because we don't have the right stuff in place. We're just getting bigger, we need to get all this stuff.
Absolutely.
Yeah. Just look at it for.
Well, yes.
Country got any questions on this?
I'm making a motion to approve the interlokal agreement.
Second.
Yeah, I'm going to motion second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay, thank you. Ordinance twenty-two dash eighteen revised water schedule of rates, this is what Scott was talking about. We could kind of box these together, twenty-two dash eighteen, twenty-two dash nineteen. Once for water and once for electricity. One point four?
Yeah, it's the reduction.
Yeah, is what it is, one point four percent of the tax, not of your bill, is that a correct statement?
No, it's a, your bill is, is based on the person, it's a percent of your bill. So theory, your bill. Okay, it's like, it's as if we eliminated a sales.
We put that in what you read.
Actually, it did, yeah.
No, no, thank you. Uh, council, got any questions or comments on this?
Make a motion to approve it twenty-two dash eighteen.
A second.
I have a motion second for ordinance twenty-two dash eighteen revised water schedule rates. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Thank you.
Make a motion for approval of ordinance twenty-two dash nineteen based on the same.
A second.
Thank you both of you. Have a motion a second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Thank you. Ordinance, I'm sorry.
Question again.
I know we're running a little on time.
Do need to suspend.
Or we could wait.
No, no, you're.
I'll make a motion to suspend the rules and approve twenty-two dash eighteen for second reading tonight.
I'll second.
I have a motion to suspend the rules for twenty-two dash eighteen, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Thank you.
Now could I have a motion to approve twenty-two dash eighteen on the second reading?
I'll second.
Got a motion second on twenty-two dash eighteen for the second reading, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Thank you.
Make a motion to suspend rules for twenty-two dash nineteen.
You're not even giving me time.
No.
I'll second, I'll second to suspend the rules.
That's good. I've got a motion.
Oh, and I'll do a second to suspend the rules.
Got a motion a second on twenty-two dash nineteen revised electric schedule of rates, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Thank you.
Make a motion to approve twenty-two dash nineteen on the second reading.
I'll second.
Can we spin the rules one time and be okay here? Do we need to spin the rules again?
This is the second time, I think you're good.
Okay.
Okay, yeah.
Yeah, we're.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay, I've got a motion.
In a second.
A second.
Yep.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Thank you.
Question on this, who else subject committed a mission about sales tax? The state is flush with what they're sending us all checked one hundred and a quarter, whatever it is, I think it's somewhere on that. They seem to be in pretty good shape with revenue wise, which is a good thing. It's not a complaint, but that being said, sales tax seven percent. Looks like they could entertain some discussion on reducing the sales tax or maybe give some additional break in such utilities here. I don't know, have you heard anything, any other communities or counties having any kind of discussion without a back?
Hi, sir, I. Be welcome certainly for my consumer stance. I, yeah, the rule like that, I'm not aware, Scott, you're working, the question is reduces the sales tax on gas.
Well, yeah, if you're looking at utilities on this, this could move, you know, savings are, that's a good thing. But the state is flush with money, as we know, we're going to send everybody out one hundred and a quarter this summer, I think, that's.
Yeah.
That's good, but they could, they could go further.
Yeah.
Other than what they're doing, particularly these inflationary times, looks like they could entertain or maybe we could, maybe we could entertain making some kind of request, say at least look at that from the standpoint, can you, you're doing this for utilities, great. We would argue that you can make some further reductions in sales tax, maybe the utility area or gasoline tax.
I know it's other issues that there's been yes, boards that have drafted letters and formally approved them, so along with the state legislature. There are legislators, I think, all of them, even if you like, saying that, you know, recommend this.
Yeah.
Obviously, you can do it individually as a citizen and as an elected official. He could tell you more than I can, but I would think it would have more pop in the case of.
Right, keep it with that.
So thanks for supporting legislation I had in the past. I actually have. Yeah.
Maybe bring it up again.
Yeah, I'm surprised it didn't do it because it's a bigger situation.
Sure.
Had in the past and so. Certain gas prices trigger that, because right now compared to. The, the state is approaching a hundred percent additional revenues.
Yeah.
Yes, sales tax, so without the gas tax.
Right. Sales tax.
Sales tax per dollar, the gas tax.
Okay.
So. Well, people buy less gas per gallon, so sales tax, I think it was a gas tax. But I'm surprised they didn't do it.
Was something, could we entertain me for the June meeting, to bring something back to us to entertain on that discussion? Like, and as a town that we, we entertain that and maybe try to move something forward, you might get some piggyback from some other towns.
You know, resolution.
Yeah. Right.
I'll, I'll draft something, set it out this time, four, three hours before the meeting. It wasn't.
I appreciate that.
Let you guys mark it up and make suggestions.
Thank you.
Jeff, back to these two ordinances, dash eighteen, dash nineteen, says here, prior to adoption of foregoing ordinance, a public hearing was held on such and such date. Scott, did we have a public hearing on this electrical?
Water rate, water rate.
Oh, yeah, I forgot to mention it went before the utility rate advisor board last night.
Okay, so that's the date last night.
Yes.
Anything else? Let's move on to ordinance twenty-two dash twenty, amending their ordinance two thousand eighteen dash oh one, covering trees and shrubs. Sure.
I'm here on behalf of the Pendleton Urban Forestry Committee. We've got one of our members here, Carol Hannah. She's been here probably recent six months ago for the twenty-two meeting, it's been really a key involvement on that floor. Before us tonight, we wanted to present an amendment to the twenty-two twenty one, which is that we're going to govern our trees and shrubs. It's just one little change, one minor change in what we like to propose. Currently, it is a seven member board. And in the last couple of years, we've really struggled getting it to be able to have consistency and be able to be. And this board is anxious to back up and going strong. It's very important for our community, so it's likely to be vital and active. And by proposing what we like to propose and staff here as well as all the members, we actually are down to five members because we have two that had resigned because of board applications. So we decided to go ahead and hold off on appointments for those positions, knowing that we wanted to go ahead and make this change, that we proposed a change. Town council oversees the establishment of this board, oversees the rules and part of approvals outlines the membership stuff. So being that it is seven, we wanted to go ahead and propose for using it to five. So then that way we'd only need to have three each month and not going to meet for them. Strong next week. The there's no state statute that governs the membership size here, so we just wanted to fit the minor change. Help provision same and same. And I believe if I'm correct, it was required to read as well in order to be passed by town council. So just wanted to present it to you. Any consideration? Do you have anything you want to add? We just, we've not been able to meet all year.
How will that help you get a four or a five?
Well, we'll need three people, four.
All right, you thought it out, I'm, I'm fine with it.
I know there's only one number difference, I think, with the number we have on that board and the word.
And it's even harder to find. I won't be this bad, but it's hard to find five people or seven people when we're trying to reappoint more members. I mean, it's tough. Yes.
And it's not, it's maybe not the most important for.
But it is, yes.
Yeah.
And you've been talking about this since October, right? Like, I mean, it's been, yeah, okay. When I was digging through your minutes, I saw October was the last time I think you guys were able to meet with a quorum. Yeah, so.
Any other questions or comments about this ordinance change is all it really is.
Yeah.
If not, entertain a motion for twenty-two days twenty, amending ordinance twenty eighteen dash one.
So moved.
I'll second.
I have a motion second on ordinance twenty-two dash twenty, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Thank you.
Make a motion to suspend the rules for twenty-two dash twenty.
I'll second.
I got a motion second, spend the rules on ordinance twenty-two dash twenty, amending ordinance twenty eighteen dash one. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay, thank you.
Make a motion to approve twenty-two dash twenty on second reading.
A second.
I have a motion a second on twenty-two days twenty, amending the ordinance twenty eighteen dash oh one, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay, thank you. Or this is passed. Okay, next one is ordinance twenty-two dash twenty-one, amending the U D O.
Yeah, so we had a few amendments given a favorable recommendation by the planning commission last week. And these mostly involve updating definitions and language for developers to use in flats. I just want something developers can copy and paste, so not, you know, searching around for stuff. I just wanted exactly like how I formatted it. So they gave all four amendments a favorable.
We're going to see these changes. Periodically, they're going to slow down, but I think changes are good because Hannah and Denise and Scott are trying to keep this updated so that everybody's the same when they come in here.
Right.
Questions are answered the same.
And some of these things are just, I mean, they haven't really utilized yet, it's just things that we know is like, that's really not practical for, you know. That doesn't make any sense for this area, so that's, that's what a lot of it is, because I know we've probably got five or six rounds of amendments that this is doing. But I think that's appropriate for the first year or so. Just got to get it fine tuned.
Any more questions or comments, council? And entertain a motion for ordinance twenty-two days twenty-one, amending the U D O.
So moved. Go ahead, Bob. I'll say.
All right, I got a motion second for ordinance twenty-two days twenty-one, amending the U D O, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay, thank you.
Should you rule? Don't have to, we have the first reading, we set the planning commission.
Yes.
True.
That's right.
Yeah.
Ordinance twenty-two days twenty-two, adopting a public-private agreement policy.
So state law requires if you ever entertain a public-private agreement feature that you first have in place. And so this, we probably need to have it anyway, because there's a discussion. So far, solved. Or something of that nature, but the current issue that we have is there's an R F P out from us to for the Aquatics Center, and it's open ended as far as whether it would be a build on transfer or not, we're asking them to tell us. And then we'll evaluate whether it's feasible from town, but if it is a build on transfer, this budget, this order is required ahead of time. And so that's why we're doing here, what I was saying with the Aquatics Center, that's what we're going to do. Doesn't require us to ever do a build on transfer, but you have to have this in place. Put out an R F P. It has a possibility.
That would be a good business move as far as getting your horizons and looking at ventures you can entertain.
Yeah, so, so build on transfer if we ever did that, the Aquatics Center is very. We did do an R F P that was strictly build on transfer, the reason we do it is that doesn't challenge this or, or bonding. So especially somewhere higher, higher up town.
In fact, on the bonding, but if you did something and you have money on the table on this, and obviously you probably would, on is the back that up, the taxpayer. Tax funds, we used to back that up, like in a bond, you get, you know, you have to back up, you know, the bond, if the business fails and you do a venture such as this, it doesn't make it, on you back up the financing on that with tax dollars. Pretty high word of venture, obviously.
I would think of it as private financing versus a bond, a public bond. So if you enter into that agreement, the private developer would be taking on that risk. So you would have to what what funds that you would use, like your funds, water, warm.
Okay.
Or combination there.
You'd have to back up your piece of it, your piece of the.
Who's gonna wanna do a build-out transfer with you, if you're not gonna. Back it up, and it's to your advantage to reduce the risk to the extent possible.
The part that you could entertain beyond the taxpayer, or say, you could look at your utilities.
Any other comments? Not, can I have a motion to. Approve ordinance twenty-two dash twenty-two, adopting. Public-private agreement policy.
And make a motion to approve.
I'll second.
I have a motion second to approve ordinance twenty-two dash twenty-two, all in favor say aye. All opposed say aye, thank you.
I'll make a motion, we suspend the rules and approve ordinance twenty-two dash twenty-two.
I'll second.
Got a motion second to spin the rules. All in favor say aye. All opposed, say aye, thank you.
Make a motion to twenty-two twenty-two with second reading.
I'll second.
Motion second to approve, second reading of ordinance twenty-two dash twenty-two, adopting. A public-private agreement policy, all in favor say aye. All opposed say aye. Prove, thank you. Any public comments? On Ed, you shook, you shook your head, no. That's fine, that's fine.
Hold on, Chad, I would like to talk about, I know it's not on the agenda tonight, but I know we've had discussions about salaries for the town employees. About potentially looking at, with the inflation rates and stuff. I didn't know if the council wanted to speak on this more tonight. A little bit, or. We've kicked around about it in talks. About giving a potential. Up to a two percent. To help out with inflation. I mean, everybody's struggling right now, and if it's feasible for the town to do it. We'll put that out for discussion.
Do we have to make a motion to amend the agenda?
That's probably best.
Okay, I'll make a.
Or you could make it under public comments.
Yeah, it's pretty much a public comment right now.
Okay, okay, that's fine.
Discussing it, whether or not. What the rest of council thinks.
That amount, if we did that, is about fifty-seven, fifty-eight thousand dollars. Now, that could go up depending if overtime and that sort of thing. But that would be the, the base amount that we've talked about this time. Now, the only. Thing is, so, let's rewind. Most of our staff is paid at the minimum of the salary ordinance. We have a few staff people who are paid at the maximum of the salary ordinance, so. For most of this, it does not affect the salary ordinance because everybody's mostly paid at the minimum. However, there are employees who are paid at the max, so we would have to amend the salary ordinance to raise the max on those positions. Because the amount that we'd be paying them would exceed what the salary ordinance already says, correct?
I'm sorry, I was. I was talking about what you're saying.
Okay.
We really were.
That's okay. What I was saying is that, in our salary ordinance, we have minimums and maximums. Most all of our staff is paid at the minimum, however, we have a few staff people who are paid at the maximum. So if we were to give a two percent across the board increase, we would have to amend the salary ordinance. At least for the two positions or three positions that are paid at the max, so that we're not buying our own salary ordinance.
That's fair, if you're gonna raise their salaries, salary has to be at the rate.
Right, so, those few positions, we would need, otherwise, the salary ordinance could stand.
Although you could do that all in one. You could, well, you could amend the salary ordinance to include the provision.
Okay.
You could do it all at once.
Okay, okay. Yeah.
I'm not aware of it, are the, are the, are these under?
Sure.
All of them are under your trust.
No.
No.
And, and let me add a comment there on men, man and mass, okay? It's not that all the town employees are at the men. Okay, that's a three-year salary ordinance, should say salary ordinance, but it was figured. With the five percent into it to come up with the man, and then we put another ten percent, no, three, three percent. Help, Scott, that you're the one to help to do this, and then three percent the third year, which actually makes it eleven point three percent. When you compound everything, so the man is. Really, everybody got their five percent raise that we're starting at three years cycle.
Yes, the minimum that is reflected in the twenty-twenty-two salary ordinance is five percent over what the twenty-twenty salary ordinance stated, correct?
So it would be. Five percent.
It'd be two percent of what is currently at, what they are currently being paid at, so they are somewhere between that men and that max. Which apparently, which already has a five percent bump in it. So, yes.
So just for, yeah, so just for a clarification. Technically be a little bit more than two percent.
Yeah, well, there wasn't one in twenty-twenty, I mean, there was a salary ordinance, but yes, yes. The way that we talked about it last, yes, and, and executive committee.
I certainly understand the issue on inflation, we can all feel that, I guess I have some concerns on. Middle of the year, that you, you have your budget, you do your budget, and I would think that. That's not opposed to that, we entertain say a two percent on that, but you're, you're kind of breaking in your budget, looks like it. Also, you want to have some discussion on, should this be something you would entertain when you have your budget discussions this fall, or calendar year twenty-three?
I was just bringing it up for discussion.
Yeah, I know it was.
So the budgets that were submitted, and I know this is your first place also. Budget submitted was based on a ten percent. I know what I said. Might have been cut down from that, but.
Okay, I almost picked up. I, I don't wanna get another two percent, okay, when I say that. We're recording all this and everything, but that two percent means absolutely nothing. Why do we wanna give a two percent raise to all employees? What's, why would we want to do this?
I just bring it up, we can do something, try to retain people, especially with the way everything's going. I mean, it, it doesn't have to be done. It was just something to be brought up and discussed.
I think, I'd have to agree with Bob on the budget part of it.
And if it's, we can wait till, like you said in the fall.
And then, maybe if you take that fifty-three thousand or whatever, and we can give a bigger raise. Yeah, that's my opinion.
The budget cycle is gonna get started this year earlier. It's around the corner.
We're close to it now anyway, so.
Be out on projected revenues. Something like that. So, it's already, essentially.
Again, I think, I think it's a good discussion, we obviously care for and do the best for employees, they do a great job for, for all of us, for the town. And certainly, I'll get high fives for all that, I think when you get up, looking at finances, uh, it's, it's not on the agenda, I think still could bring it up on the comment. But, you know, we're, we're talking about this pay raise for employees, it, it's a great discussion, I'd rather see that build into the budget. Twenty-three, and, and also that, yeah, if you're gonna do something prior to that, get it on the agenda so the public knows. What we're looking at on that, before we would move forward with, uh, implement.
Yeah, um, the two percent came about regarding, um, we started discussing a two percent for the town employees. Uh, regarding what had transpired with the park employees, and that was, that was going to give the two percent. To everybody else, so everybody was more on a level playing field. Um, I also understand what Bob's saying about middle-of-the-year budgets. And we're all talking numbers here, but we don't have anything in front of us. So, um, I'm up for. Waiting until budget talks for twenty-twenty-three, but I'm also up for having the numbers in front of me in June. And, and, and revisiting it, if it's on the agenda. I'm kind of fifty-fifty on the whole thing.
I mean, for me, like, we talked about it last month, it didn't make the cut for the agenda this month, I don't make that agenda. I mean, and, I mean, I'm, I'm just saying, we can, we can table it, and it's not even really a motion, so it's not that big of a deal. We can talk about it next month, we can talk about it in September, we can do whatever, but at some point, we need to discuss this. Publicly and figure it out, because I feel like we've already kind of teed it up, we either need to pull the tea out of the ground or hit the ball, like one or the other.
I, I would like for, I would, I would like to have the numbers in front of me for the next meeting and have it on the agenda.
That's totally fine, by me, I would support that.
Like an ordinance that would authorize this, or?
I would like to see what the numbers are and what exactly it's going to cost the town to do the two percent.
I think we're pretty close. That's what the council would like.
That's fine.
So, so I could, so I could give you that, plus I could go back and do. Two percent, you want it as if it was seven percent for the twenty-twenty-one, or two percent on top of the existing?
It'd be two percent on top of the existing.
Yes.
This is just discussion. No motion being made at all.
The other thing I think is important that was, what is general fund, what is lacquer? Significant amount of employees.
Any other comments?
If we, just on clear on that, upon this discussion, did that also entail the issue of the park?
The park employees have been removed from our salary ordinance.
Park is no longer part of the salary. Therefore, anything we do with any raise for our employees, the park is not a part of that.
Any more questions or comments?